May fifteenth work session, May fifth work session, I apologize. Please silence or shut off your cell phones if you would please, and please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to welcome everybody here, and our first item of business is the nine AM end of fire briefing. Thank you guys, everybody for coming. Whoever's the main speaker can set up the drone or you can just do it from where you're at.
If you guys are okay with it, we want to just give the season outlook with Clint first and then we can all, so Clint can give you just kind of the outlook, the picture of where we're sitting on conditions first, and go from there.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Welcome.
So, the first page is pretty self-explanatory, the product that we put together, obviously a month or two ago, but just looking at the fact that our droughts are cyclical, and this is, you know, a fairly short term that we're looking at, but this is looking like about five or six years, making me somewhat hopeful that we can get past this one here fairly shortly, this being about the fifth year of this one. So, the old fingerprint that Dan was alluding to, the first chart and graph that I had there, so on the left-hand side you'll see it says thousand hour, and that's our representation generally of dryness that we're looking at, or one of them, and you can see that we're in this about a twenty-year low, and that's all pretty obvious. I didn't want to get in the weeds about it, but this may actually as, well, you guys are aware of the fact that, you know, our snowpack was next to minimal, yet our water year precip were about average, and that's from three, four different storms that brought us the majority of that going clear back to last fall. So, our system is based somewhat on that. So, this, I would actually say that I bring that up, is somewhat of an overrepresentation, that we're probably in fact drier, because our stations are keyed off of that precip as well. So, I would say we could potentially be even drier than what this is indicating, and these guys will elaborate, but I can tell you, you know, we are also going off of that with our thought processes, that our fire dangers may not be quite as representative as it should be with the drought effects.
Could be more intense.
Yes.
So, Clint, what kind of feedback have you all at headquarters for the different agencies gotten on your prescribed burning related to consumption on the thousand hours?
The last couple of weeks, it's, it's just really dropped off pretty rapidly. So, like, two weeks ago, in a number of areas, depending on aspect, it might have been burning nicely, or on north aspects, hard to get going, and now, in the last week, it's, everything is wanting to go. So, very dry, and then these guys might have additional symptoms.
Yeah, so to add to that feedback from last week, in which we had quite a few projects ongoing, the large fuels are consuming like they would in the fall. They're, they're dry, they didn't get that, you know, ground moisture to absorb into them from the winter, nor did they have the snowpack over them, so they're consuming completely. I mean, they're burning right up. So, the spotting potential on some of our projects was high, so crews had to monitor that quite a bit, too, and in some cases, when you're early like this, some of the brush components still dormant, hasn't really come to vigor or green up, which Clint may speak to green up a little bit, too, but, so things want to burn, they're consuming. Doesn't mean that that is a bad thing against your objectives of the burn, it's just another thing to monitor and take note of, and that's the feedback we're getting from the field on those projects.
Okay. So, the bottom chart is our energy release component, one of our primary indicators of fire danger, and you can see that as we would expect, you can see we're dropped down due to some precipitation events, but we're right up there with this twenty-year high. Just nothing that we wouldn't, all of us, expect to be happening. And then, as Bob alluded to, as far as the green up, anticipating, as we've seen, an early green up and a truncated and abbreviated green up, so just not expecting that to carry us very far at all into the season as far as helping to slow fires down, that type of thing. Okay, next page, again, just, I know this is stuff that you guys are completely on top of, drought monitor just brings us up to date, this thing is updated every Thursday, so just a few days old, but this is where we're at as far as the drought. The red area that's in Oregon is continuing to expand into greater areas of Oregon, and the real dark red that's the core that in California, earlier, a month or so ago, was actually poking up into Oregon, receded just a bit, and driven again by some precipitation events, anticipating that that will again move back into southern Lake and the Plymouth Counties. And the outlook going clear out through July thirty-first on that bottom picture is indicating persisting or intensifying drought effects for our area. The next page on the right is about a two-week out outlook, just the weather, just kind of some, giving you guys some heads up, that we'll probably be at or above-average temps, and indicating we might get a shot of moisture down there below with that green coming in. I have to say, they've teased us with this throughout the spring, and it seems like pretty invariably we get to that moment, and they've rung the moisture out of the clouds before it can get to us, so we'll see. I don't mean to be redundant, but it's a little something I found this morning in looking, and I thought it interesting. So, if you look at the next page, similar looking graph, it says May thirty, April, and I tried to get the more recent data, and so this is one month out, and so it's showing above-normal temperatures and equal chances of precip if you're, if you're following me down below. So, our particular area is in, in the white, and so it's showing about a month out, you know, an average spring as far as precip or whatever that might mean. And I wanted to go with that, because it's, it's relatively newer data with that April thirtieth, and then if you look at the next page over, it says May, April sixteenth, and it's a little bit more stale, so I was a little hesitant to use it, but it is a three-month outlook. And so, at the top, it again says above-average chances, probabilities for temperature, and then down below, it again technically puts the majority of us in the equal chances. What I ended up putting this in for, and I thought was interesting, is what it's indicating is a pretty strong monsoonal flow for the three-month period, and the effect, if this does come to pass, is a lightning-producing type system, and this will definitely be a workload and an issue for us if this comes to be. So, the data, you know, as the weeks go by, I get a little less trusting of it, but it's definitely something for all of us to be aware of, and that's why I ended up putting that in. So, the next page showing the United States, it's got a big patch of green down at the bottom, and some red patches in California. This is a national fire center, Boise, product that they put together, and a significant wildland fire potential outlook, and it has it for May, the bottom one is June, and then the next page is July and August. I always, all of our people are always going to this to look at it, to see what it has to say, and I encourage you guys to do that. I want to create an awareness for, especially for you guys, is that this is for national and regional use, and what they consider a significant wildfire is not necessarily what we would consider a significant wildfire. They're looking at what it's going to mobilizing resources from outside our geographic area, that type of thing. As far as I'm concerned, we could have what we would think of as significant wildfire this month, so even though we aren't showing that, and then obviously, it does progress in June and July and August, and definitely have note the fact that they're seeing that in June, which is typically a green-up month for us, things slow down, it's time for us to draw a breath and get our folks trained up, but we're going to have to be ready against the sport. So, with all this positive, I'm sorry, I did think that, I was searching around this morning, I might deliver some bit of good news. I am not a El Nino, La Niña person at all, I have a couple of things that I've just gotten from my overall understanding, is that La, or El Nino is, doesn't provide a good correlation for the northwest in the summertime. It's not a useful product to indicate whether we're going to have a fire season, or whether there's precipitation, that type of thing. There is a better correlation in the wintertime for El Nino. If they say that, like, there's going to be a strong El Nino, then we tend to have winter winters. I found this just this morning going through, looking at that long range, and if you look further to the right-hand side of that chart, the NDJ is November, December, January, and it is indicating, and this is actually the first I've seen or heard of it, that come about our wintertime, that they are forecasting at this point a strong El Nino, which would be good news, much typically for us if that does, does happen. So, I thought I would deliver one quick spot.
I've heard that through the long term, that El Nino will give a lot more precip, doesn't mean snow, but moisture.
Right. So, that's what I have for outlook. Do you guys have any questions or thoughts?
Probably the same as yours.
When you first started, you talked about a five-year cycle.
Yep.
What's your confidence that it may not be a six or seven-year cycle?
Well, actually, so thinking about that, I wouldn't be surprised if in fact we went through yet another winter of drought without considering what we just looked at, because it's, you know, five-year, you don't hang your hat on that. So, and matter of fact, kind of the old saw is a seven-year drought cycle, so I wouldn't be surprised at all if we in fact had to suffer through another quarter. So, yeah, I'm not betting on definitive.
So, Clint, I know you work with meteorologists on the regular forecasting, but the climatologists, are they sharing with you, have you looked at the climatology data to see this five-year block of time, how normal that is, historic norms, because we always talk about the global warming or climate change. So, relative to our conditions, is this something we've seen over the last hundred years or two hundred years?
Well, you know, I don't think anybody is forecasting anything, but I can tell you the leanings that I'm sure you're all aware of, is that people are leaning towards and thinking about climate change. So, the implication being, and no one's coming right out and saying that, is that maybe this is prolonged, or maybe when we do come out of it, we don't come out of it as well as we have in the past. So, it's these cycles that are progressing upwards in that sense, and that, that's the implication in the discussions, no one's flat out drawing that graph and drawing that line that I've seen.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, just real quick for the Sheldon Hart National Wildlife Refuge Complex, just a few statements on both last season and this season. Last season, we, we, well, we continue to work through a regional reorganization, and part of the reason that in the past five years, we haven't been able to completely staff our second engine, was because of the reorganization, we had to reduce some overhead, so we can shuffle. That happened last year, as far as reducing that overhead, so this winter, we went to, or actually, last summer, we went from three folks to two folks in the overhead conditions, and that being myself, the fire operations specialist, and the prescribed field specialist. We lost the fire operations specialist, and so what I, what I had been told initially was that we would, due to the budgetary constraints, we will continue to only have the two overhead staffing, the FMO plus one, whatever they're called. Starting to hear a little rumors that we might, we might be able to get that air condition back in the title of it, because of the sage grouse issues, or, you know, the workload that we have, even though it's not necessarily a fire workload, but the organizational workload in, with our interagency partners and all of our partners, you know, surrounding us down in Nevada and California, too, but, so that's yet to come. Last summer, we, because of those staffing issues, we were able to staff two engines, five days per week, and we brought in an additional engine in the miscellaneous overhead on Southern, for about thirty-eight days in August. No starts were detected on either refuge last year, which isn't completely uncommon either. I think we have starts that we just don't know about, there's just enough folks out there, there's just same with juniper tree kind of fires, but regardless, we didn't detect anything. So, this season, because of the reorganization efforts, we are, we will be staffing two engines, seven days per week, fully staffed with adequate overhead, so that's the first time in my opinion in this position, so I'm very excited about that.
Seven days a week, have you shielded ours?
We just have a rotating lead off schedule through, through the whole staff of the units. We have fully qualified assistants that can run the truck when the captain's not there, and then everybody all the way through the temps, they just have a rotating kind of lead off schedule, so it should be three people on the truck. They will be staffed out of Lakeview this year, which we've done the last couple of years, it seems to help with, well, we initially did it because we didn't have adequate overhead on the trucks, and wanted a little bit tighter control and oversight, but we also have better recruitment, when the folks get to stay in town as opposed to out on the refuges, but I'm pretty sure that it's not going to stay that way, because John Kazabon has been pretty adamant that he wants the trucks stationed out on the refuges, regardless, they, they know where they need to go, whenever they need to go, so it doesn't really matter in that, in a role, in regards to work accomplished.
To bring up a name like John Kazabon, I'm always conscious of the audience for them to know.
Our project leader, our project leader, yeah, our boss, my boss. We're currently working on, I am currently working on a fire management plan revision. We were not able to accomplish any prescribed burning this winter, because for whatever reason, I think they were, the regional office was trying to force us to get the plans revised. They said we couldn't burn until our plans were completed.
The CCP?
No, the fire management plan was set by that one, even though the old plans are in place, so I, I was short-staffed this winter, and so I continue to work with that, it's getting close, but once I get that done, we'll be able to go back out and use the prescribed burning when we have opportunity next fall. And here recently, we've had a lot of staff involvement with the VAP process and the secretarial order, thirty-three to sixty-six, and the resilient landscape initiative requirements, all tied to the sage grouse potential listing in our, in our work to try and make sure that we don't have to take that step with the Fish and Wildlife program. And just to tie onto what Clint was saying, I don't, I didn't bring the numbers with me, I just jotted them down as I walked through the fire cache this morning, what the guys did, took some live fuel sample, moistures, end of last week, and we are sitting at about, I'll just say max, in our percentage for the green up in the, in the sagebrush out in Blizzard Gap and up on Hart, so we're a little ahead of schedule, so not having the snowpack in the warm, the air temperatures, everything's taking up moisture, and I expect it to start dropping pretty rapidly in the near future, I don't think it's that long.
I would think so. So, regional offices, I haven't been in the loop needless to say, but are we still in Portland, or in Sacramento?
No, Portland.
Okay, is Sacramento now a region?
It's, it is a, it is and has been, but they call it a regional office, I don't know if it's a true regional office, or if it's kind of a sub, because they still use some of the folks, our, that are stationed up in Portland for, like, HR and contract purposes and things, but they do have, it's Californian in the back.
And so, through the highest levels, when we talk about the sage grouse and the sage grouse plan through the secretarial order, we haven't heard anything come down from, from DC relative to money?
No, the last thing that, that we did in conjunction with the VLM was through the Resilient Landscape Initiative, which is sponsored by Fish, that everything, all the paper and work goes up through Fish and Wildlife Service, and we haven't heard anything yet. I heard rumor that we might be getting half of what we asked for this year, and hopefully the other half next year, and all that, well, all of our money in that was to go towards juniper reduction, I think it was just over two million for Fish.
We did receive a lot just recently on the VLM side for the treatment, the chemical treatment of some of our sage.
But it wasn't the landscape initiative portion, you guys have gotten a bunch of other pots of money made that you want to get a hold of.
Well, I know, and I don't know the numbers, but I know they were going to put forth a substantial amount of money for not only treatments, but protection.
Correct.
And in, in the briefing paper that we supplied you, that we did get, the VLM did get money for protection, so we were able to add some more equipment, and it's indicated there, so, and Bob will go through it over.
Yeah, there's a short-term vision and some opportunities, and then there's long-term.
Yeah, and we've had a lot of, you know, local coordination between the unofficial wildlife, as we try to work through this, we have lists of things we'd like to see happen, get, buy, put in place, whatever, in case we need, shed more money, funding opportunities come along.
Well, just so you know, that's the end of Bob, too, because I talked about since then, but Dan Ash and Neil Pornsy weren't able to attend our last Swiflet meeting, but we did have a good discussion with their representatives here early in April about this very thing, I mean, it's not a secret to anybody, but the needs specifically out here in our inter-agency areas, so hopefully we'll see all that you all can handle.
The only other small pot of money that we've received for the refuges, we had, in the, in the call that we had earlier this year, in-house, we made up, we had a short list of things that we, well, it wasn't that short, but a short list, we set up, sent up like four prioritized things we would like to receive money for, funding for, and the only thing that got funded for that was some money to fix the radio system out of Sheldon, and that was out of a sage, some kind of a sage grouse money. But unfortunately for us, I mean, we never have large budgets anyhow, but unfortunately in this case for us, we definitely aren't coming close to getting the kind of funding that the VLM is to take care of, to take care of this issue and take it on.
No.
Extra staffing, any of that stuff, none of that's coming big, like.
Is the, you know, you'll hear that low elevation sage grouse has a high tendency of not coming back, or not as sweet, higher elevation more resilient, that we find that pretty hard?
Yeah, okay. There's no question, there's better soils and more water in those higher elevations, more moisture, definitely, so we have to look at that for every project we do as well. That's all I have, unless you have any other questions.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
You need to get a hold of the government, they recommend that, with the plans you guys at ODOT. Had a big story last night on the Medford ODF, and they called it ODOT the whole time.
Was it good for us, or?
Well, you're off the hook.
Oh, that's good. Okay, so ODF, first we'll touch on last year a little bit, they handed you our annual report, feel free to look at it when you have some time. Last year, far as fires concerned, it was about an average season for a number of fires, but it was well about average for acres. We had five significant fires here in the Plymouth Lake District, ended up burning about a little over twenty-one thousand acres, which is about twenty thousand more than our ten-year average. A lot of those came from that Oregon Golds fire, which was on the border of Catsina and Plymouth Counties, but we did have a couple, most of our fires, significant fires were in Plymouth County, between Bryant out of Bonanza, Marcusson Hill, out of Sprague River, on Oklahoma, near Plymouth Lake, and then Ferguson was on Ferguson Mountain out of Bay. Otherwise, I guess we're, for this season, geared up about the same as we were last year, here locally, we'll be fully staffed, we'll have our seven engines here in the lake unit, eleven in Plymouth, those engines will be stationed in Camp Six, North of Bly, one of Silver Lake, and then three here in Lakeview, we'll have our D-six dozer here in Lakeview again this year, and then on the district, we'll have our Type III helicopter, we'll have a Type II helicopter, and a detection plane. As far as the agency is concerned, we did make one change this year, in the past, about the past ten years, we contracted two large air tankers, one of them in Medford, one in Redmond, stationed there today. With the, with the federal air tanker fleet kind of on the increase, and for some other reasons, we ended up dropping one of those air tankers off of our contract, and in exchange, we used the money this year to put three additional single-engine air tankers on contract and two Type II helicopters. So, it's increased our fleet, like, single-engine air tankers, we've had two for the last year or two, so now we're up to five of those, which are pretty mobile to move around as we need. There'll be stationed two in LeGrand, two in Primeville, one in John Day, and then if fire activity warrants, they'll be moved where we need to. The Type II helicopters are basically stationed all across the state, except for, I guess, the north-class Roseburg, about the farthest north as they go. So, that's increased our aviation fleet with the agency about, up to about thirty aircraft, which is about twenty more than we had just a few years ago, so it's been a growing program for us. It's been pretty successful, even given some of the fire history we've had, it's been pretty successful in stopping quite a few fires that we find when we've stopped other ones. Last year, as you know, for the agency, it was a pretty busy year, all the way across, the second year in a row that our agency made it through our emergency fund for our agency, the general fund into the insurance fund, and exhausted the insurance fund. Some visits by our key leadership back to Lloyd of London in London, we were able to secure an insurance policy again this year, it did cost us a little bit more, the deductible went up, as one would expect, so we're, we're hoping we can stay out of it as much as possible this year, else it may be pretty darn tough to keep it, keep it around past the summer, so, given the drought and the conditions where they are, it's, it's going to be a challenge. Other than that, that's kind of where we're at, we'll fully staff, like I said.
Well, I've got a couple of questions, but I was really remiss and I didn't mention it to our chair, I had it in mind. I had a, I had, I'd sent Bob an email yesterday and I know some of you here got it from NACO, our National Association of Counties, with relative to the western region of, uh, of the Swiflet group is working on some, some notifications to counties relative to preparing for fire season, where you're at, and, you know, you have agreements in place. Which brings me around the horn, our sheriff, our new sheriff, Mike Taylor, is present. I'd asked him last night in the mail letter, I mentioned to him that we would be meeting today, and I, I don't think this meeting is intended to get into his nitty-gritty that it will be valuable for him, but I'm going to ask you all in the leadership of the agencies at some point, Sheriff Taylor and probably under Sheriff Hall will can meet with you all. So, and if we do have a large fire occurrence in our area, that we're all on the same page on the role of the county, particularly in law enforcement, playing in that, I think that'd be very valuable preseason, so.
No, that sounds like a good, good plan.
Okay.
She will be recording.
Also, to for you, uh, I tend to advise means committee meeting and OIT, and Jim Belay, permission, Jim Belay kind of make a strong pitch for adequate funding for ODF.
It seems like we have quite a bit of support right now, which is, which is.
So I'll go to my, one of my questions on the aircraft part, and we ever saw the certification issue relative to the TruMan Agency ability to fly aircraft, whether it's state contracted or not, on federal fires besides what the notion is threatening federal land, federal protected land?
So we, I mean, yeah, there's, it's a little bit of a matrix depending on, you know, whose fire, what's its threat, what's the jurisdiction, what is threatening, what aircraft it is, you know, how it's carded. Um, but like, for example, our ODF air tankers, which have not been federally carded, um, you know, ODF, if there's a fire on federal land that is threatening ODF protected land, we can fly those on that federal land and we end up paying the cost of that. Um, there was not a process other than if there was inland threat to life and property for federal agencies to pay for the cost of that aircraft on their, on their fire that wasn't threatening.
And it's just the life.
So, but with us moving away, we're down to one large air tanker, um, essentially I think that is the only aircraft, and could be wrong, maybe one other, but the rest of the aircraft we're contracting in a contracted is, uh, stipulation that they will be federally carded, so they can go work on federal fires or ODF fires. And so they're sitting there and we're not using them and, and our partners have a fire and they need some aircraft, they can go over there and they can, uh, pay the bill for those as well, so, which helps defer our costs.
Sure.
So it's getting better all the time. One last thing I would add for the, uh, update for the agency, one thing that's kind of new is, um, Greg Pittman, my supervisor, District Forester, has been working quite a bit just lately, um, last few weeks with the forest leadership on, um, ODF's ability to assist with accelerated landscape restoration and also some good neighbor working. Hopeful that in the next, uh, couple of weeks that we'll have something going.
Well, that's truly at the heart of how we're going to handle an actual fire problem is the restoration efforts. I'm glad, in, in a lot of ways, you brought that up, Wes, because Jim Walz and I had quite a discussion last week about ODF and their role through the good neighbor policy. And relative to accelerated landscape and relative to the stewardship contracting, so I don't know if this is the appropriate venue to talk about it, but I'm hopeful that ODF's able to play a huge role in that.
Yeah, looks like we'll have a chance to probably get our feet wet here in the next couple of weeks and, I mean, as you know, in the governor's budget, there was, uh, quite a chunk of money this year, this coming biennium for, to assisting federally with the restoration.
Yeah, well, there's quite a chunk of money in just the administrative overhead to run the program and it gets at the heart of our local contracting concerns and issues. So this is good.
Just, unless you have any?
Just a question on your fire season statistics here.
Mm-hmm.
I counted twenty-six human-caused fires and you have thirty-four for those other eight.
I was just looking at it. I don't think I looked at the numbers, huh? I don't know. Let's see. Hmm. Good question. I can get back to you on that. Well, I just, I was sure, I just said anything like you. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Uh, addressing the human-caused fire, um, this week, this month is wildfire detection month, or wildfires, uh, education month. Uh, so ODF is trying to, it will be sending out press releases. Um, we have, um, a Skethump Facebook and Twitter account, so we'll be promoting that to all the information and, but, uh, yeah, we've been trying to get with the Herald News and the, um, Lake County paper to do more prevention stories, and you'll be seeing those stories because of how many, um, human-caused fires we had last year. Um, so, and when a lot of those fires could have been avoided, we really need to get the message out there, so.
So I'll kind of use Erica's comments there as a little lead-in to what we expect, and you're probably already feeling with our fire season, we totally expect from what Clint's provided and, and just our professional knowledge and awareness that we're going to be facing a long season of potentially, uh, difficult to manage and deal with wildfires. The true nature of them, we'll wait and see what Mother Nature brings to us, but we fully intend and prepare to think that we're going to have an early onset of fire season and it could extend for quite a while. Last year, we had conditions that were poor as well, and for both the Forest Service and BLM, who I'm representing, um, we had probably a fifty percent increase in the number of fires that we have on a general ten-year average. Our acres were down, um, for one reason or another, we were able to have opportunity to manage those and get around them. We could be faced with a similar number of starts this year, we don't know. The weather patterns, uh, that Clint alluded to, that we're looking at right now, push a lot of monsoonal moisture up from the Gulf, and that generally means lightning here in this part of the Great Basin and up, up this way. If they come with moisture, we'll be happy. Um, if they don't, we'll be, uh, stretched. Because a large geographic area is impacted with similar conditions, if we get a number of fires, um, here or even in Northern California, in parts of Nevada, and in other regions, availability of resources could be very scarce for us in Oregon. Our fire seasons are generally a little bit later than some of those other regions, and if they stay active by the time we need some of those assets, it may be very, um, we have to compete for them. Last year, we didn't have to compete for as many resources, because a lot of those areas I speak of weren't very active. So we had a lot coming into Oregon and Southern, and Washington to help us in our matters. So what are we doing this year, a little bit to that? Specifically to the Forest Service, our budget's still challenging there. It has not seen an increase. We have been able to make choices however, and consolidate some things so that we can still staff and maintain all the resources we've had at a good level. So you can, you'll see on the briefing paper there, we're still able to maintain eighteen engines on the forest. We're still able to staff all of our hand crews, the ten-person hand crew in Lakeview, the ten-person hand crew in Bly, as well as the hop shot crew in Clamath Falls. Our inter-agency helicopter program still has its complement of our Forest Service employees on it, so the number of firefighters total on that are fifteen, which is a very stable number. Um, we have a, uh, engine, a tender, uh, dozer combination out of Chiliquan there. Air attack platform is still funded out of Clamath Falls. So we still have a great, we're able to maintain that complement on the Forest Service side that we've historically had. The BLM has seen a little bit of an increase. The sage grouse habitat priorities have allowed me and our agency here to compete for, um, additional funds to help us in our cause. Because of that, we will be putting more people on the resources we've had, and we will be adding a few. Um, so we're still maintaining the nine engines that we currently have within the BLM, but they may have a few more bodies on them, a few more firefighters effective on those resources at staffing level. Our helicopter program's still maintained, our veteran crew out of Clamath Falls, is it twenty-five people? The number says twenty, but we still target and try to get twenty-five and we'll probably have that this year. We will still play host to the single-engine air tankers, um, out of, uh, the base here in Lakeview. And when I say host, they are still treated like a national, a national resource, so if places in the Southwest early have the need and we do not, they could be moved, or one or more of them, but they still end up, a perk of us hosting them as they land here and we have them here when, when they're not occupied and busy and then we get to use them and then when we stay busy, they're going to be here. Mentioned helicopter.
So while you're talking about that, Bob, how's our base in Haisley looking?
See, basic, it'll probably still, we've had some discussions, I've had some discussions with Amy Kazmyer, who's our unit aviation officer, about the functionality of that, is it going to be used, is it something that's worth the investment that we've had on it or not? And I think we're still kind of up, up in the air, because we haven't used it for a while, because we haven't had a fire within close proximity to make, and ongoing, to make those turnaround times really effective of those seat planes operating out of there. But for now, we still are.
Well, be aware, we're working, and Tom Andrews is the one that works with the air folks on this, but on some additional fuel capabilities so that we could possibly stage a fuel truck there, so not only would we not have to come put it back to here and get ongoing fire for retardant purposes, but refueling purposes today.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Could add some additional functionality.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good, so also Betsy spoke a little bit about how we've gotten some additional funding and, um, similar to last year's request I made, some of the things that were asked that said of me, that said what would make us a little bit more effective in some of our desert areas is water. You know, we can get resources, we can get people and firefighters out there, but in the lack of water, their turnaround times to go get that and be engaged and effective on the, on the fire itself, they're not as strong as they could be. So we, we last year had some water tenders and a detection plane staged with special dollars. We're looking to do that again this year. The detection is, is, is very important to us. It's a large geographic area and, and you don't know what actions you need to take if you can't find that there's a fire up there. Quite often, we rely on the public and some of our lookouts and other things to give us intel on when fires start. It's nice to get that intel a little quicker if we can have a detection plane that tells exactly what we have, so we can make very informed decisions. So those are some things that are happening now, this year with the monies we have. Also, this year, within the BLM, some monies and a large pot of money has came to the Lakeview District for fuel treatment. Uh, the North Warner and South Warner project areas, as well as some things that go into the Beatty Butte area and around Hart Mountain. Are recognized as one of the highest priority areas there are for sage grouse. Therefore, we had a project ready to go to do treatment there and got funding to get a lot of that accomplished. And much of that is still the ongoing getting rid of the invasive juniper in some of that habitat, so that there's less predation on sage grouse and there's, you know, it's a return to more of a historic sage ecosystem that's out there. So yes, it's benefiting us, definitely. Long-term, I think we'll see much more benefits. We're going to have some meetings tomorrow with the Fish and Wildlife and BLM. Talk a little bit about some of the planning efforts we have underway, um, and I'd like to preface that with saying they're not necessarily new things, but they might be re-energizing some of the concepts and thoughts of what we do do, uh, to manage those, those public lands, the BLM lands, and making them more efficient. Things like detection. Maybe we can partnership with the sage grouse habitat, uh, importance of that, with our ODF partners and others to get, uh, better detection system or communication systems out in our more, uh, desert areas, uh, detection cameras, for example, and a, and a center that way to help us. Resources and assets that we, we ask for when we get into the heat of the season, like water, maybe we can make a more permanent change in that and develop some things that are long-lasting. So those are some of the big picture, uh, in the futuring things to make maybe the tools we currently have more effective in doing the job we're doing. It's not like we're reinventing the wheel, we're just maybe trying to make, make our ability to do our job a little easier with this. So shifting gears a little bit to the season again, uh, what we're looking at at hand. A lot of coordination meetings, uh, as you can, as you can, you can kind of hear with, with the partners in Skethump, as well as, um, co-operators, the range land associations and others, all seeing that we have a task at hand to try to manage these as best we can, and knowing that Mother Nature throws us all, you know, curveballs once in a while. And so the more effective we can be together, the better chance we have of addressing those. A lot of coordination needs. And we also coordinate that fire danger through the summer. So last year, we had quite a few human-caused fires in some areas, and that's because of how dry and hot it is. People accidentally, um, can cause starts. Awareness needs to be high, you know? We could use your support in that, but then also, we need support in saying that when we have some of our inter-agency partners getting together and saying, you know, there is a very legitimate chance that, um, fire could start easily, spread rapidly, and pose a threat to our public users and to those lands, we don't take that decision lightly. We have to think about that quite a bit before we put restrictions in place. Questions came up before, are you guys going to be putting restrictions in place very early this year? I don't know. It's always based on some of the same information. How much of a threat is that, that a fire will start and spread rapidly and pose a threat to our users and the habitat? That's the same question, only whether we'll tell. But when it hits some of those, we will have a coordinated decision with all the partners on if it's the right time to do that, the responsible time to do that for the users.
That's good.
Yeah. And it always stays that way. We use Clint, Clint drives a lot of that in the discussions we have each Monday on, on whether those conditions have been met or not, and whether we should do that. And then only then our line officers, and it's in your packet there, the line officers are the ones that sign those new restrictions into place for the various agencies and what they need.
Earlier, when you're talking about promoting fire danger laws and so forth, and how can a county help, do you have some suggestions how we can assist, other than locally pleased meeting?
Would you like to comment?
Yeah. So, um, we have been very fortunate that the fire organization has identified the need for some more help in the communication part. Typically, Lisa, Sweetie, myself, and the BLM person would be handling all the fire information. We are bringing a person in for a hundred, a hundred and twenty-day detail, and that will one of the, one of his tasks, uh, when he gets here, we've already, um, hired that person, it starts in a couple of weeks. We'll be meeting with him and then kind of having, bringing him over to meet with you and them, and we're going to work in, uh, that's something that we're going to work together to determine how we could get you guys involved and, and get the message out, so, um, we, we've talked about it and we've had a lot of ideas, but it's going to be nice to have someone who will be a hundred percent focused on this effort, so.
So Erica, and I, the person Denise, she's our IT person.
Okay.
But, you know, we get a lot of visitors to our homepage, our county homepage, and I would think that, you know, we have a links section as a minimum, we could hopefully link this to bump, so we can see fire danger and other restrictions that are, that are put on, I'm just wondering. And I guess that could be a discussion.
Can it help you?
Yeah.
Looks like you're looking in my door.
Put something on the front page.
Okay.
You know, that did multiple sources of, of locations for this information, it'd probably be beneficial.
The fire information officer.
The fire information officer that we're bringing on, his name is Brian. Certainly, part of what he's going to be doing, and the reason he's brought on, is to be able to dedicate more time to speaking directly to, to you guys. And you guys are obviously one of the first key contacts to concern the publics, to the key individuals out there. And so keeping that communication link going, which Brian is going to help facilitate with you guys, so that when you get those calls, that you can speak, you know, immediately to the concerns and what's happened, and be, you know, more aware. I think just having greater communications, so that when you get that question, there's not hesitation, you guys know immediately what's going on within the fire group especially, that you can give that feedback back to the public, so that we can remove that uncertainty or doubt that they may be having.
We've also been really quite successful with our Skifump Twitter and Facebook page. Our Facebook page has about almost 3,000 people, and our Twitter page almost for, well, be 450 or something, and it keeps growing. And Lisa and I have been very good at trying to get out different messages out there. We've been posting all, we've worked with all our burn bosses, so they've been sending us photos of the prescribed burns, or we try to get all the notices up that we're burning the day, that day. So people have a little bit more, you know, you know, more information at their fingertips sooner, and so that's been a real successful tool, too. But we know there's so much more that we can do, and between fire and then our regular forest jobs, we haven't been able to tackle those projects, so I'm really excited to have someone here just focused on fire. And Lisa and I will still be backing Brian up, because there's no way he'll last the whole season without.
Yeah. So I want to go from the same discussion back to what I said earlier with Sheriff Taylor. I think that's going to be incredibly important, and it'd be really nice to identify some points of contact that are going to be able to get together. Sheriff, you can jump in here, too, but I, you know how these seasons unfold, you never know what's going to happen, you know what potential is, but if it happens, everything's going crazy.
Right.
And the more organized we are in that effort, and the role that we can play in the county, or should play in the county, the better off we're going to be, and so.
I think it is, it is starting of that message that part of what I wanted to come here and ask a little bit is, is we are faced with the potential to have fires that are on everybody's attention, and be very impactful. And, and the more that we can have a common thought and belief there, that people are in this together, trying to serve the best we can, and that includes our sheriff, you know, the engagement there, no doubt, with the sheriff's office. If we get into an area where evacuations are needed, and public service forsaken things, that's, that's the role we'd like to make sure we have the discussion with and how to engage that. So I think it's very appropriate there, as just one example of how when dire conditions happen, and Mother Nature isn't happy, you know, creates a, creates a fire that is problematic, we have to stay strong together in doing some of those, those functions, yeah.
Yeah, and I had a conversation with the sheriff during Senator Merkley's event, because one of the things is, is we assisted with communication efforts for the recent, a month ago, search and rescue for a gentleman. And we know that, you know, the sheriff department has limited resources, especially in, you know, trying to get press releases out and communications, so we wanted, wanted to make sure that he knew that we were here, especially during a fire situation, to assist with getting messages. And as soon as Brian gets here, Lisa and I and the new BLM PAO will be visiting with him, just on communication, so.
So one last comment on that, Erica, is it possible for you to kind of coordinate with the agency folks and the sheriff's office on getting, you know, I don't know what would be appropriate, Sheriff, I don't know how you're feeling right now about this, but I think, you know, a good hour or so visit sometime in the next few weeks would be really good to have, about the role that we, the county, and in the face of the county when it comes to these, it's usually the sheriff's office. You know, we have a fair amount of incident camp, we have the airport for support services, but beyond the ground, the out and about, the role of different things, it usually comes through the sheriff's office.
Yeah, I can, I can help get everyone, work on getting the meetings together.
The sooner the better, too, because as you all know, I wouldn't be gone June 15th, so we'll get under Sheriff Hall involved at least, too.
So we've talked a lot about communication, and I always know there's two principles, knowledge or education. We're all very good at gaining knowledge, but human factors, using the communication part. I'd like to talk to you more about Twitter and Facebook, because that is what the general populace uses a lot. And we don't have that with the county, one of the reasons, but I'd like to explore how you guys manage.
Okay, I would be happy to talk about it, but.
So hey, I'm going to take the opportunity to tell everybody, thank you for last year and fires and everything that you guys done, initial attack and everything that was done last year was incredible. We're looking at similar this year with extreme fire conditions and everything, what everybody done as opposed to last year, that was just incredible. Thank you and all the people who worked for you and everything, and so much, because that resource out there, whether it was our national forest, state lands, or private lands, was protected very well last year. And as Commissioner, I appreciate that very, very much. I know a lot of people work very hard out there. So thank you guys very much.
You're welcome. We strive for that every day.
Oh, yeah, it's just, just a breath away from one getting away.
That's right.
Tough job, I think, you guys.
That's something that most general public doesn't recognize, if it doesn't explode into a large fire, they never know about it.
They never know about it, and that's great.
It's called prevention, that doesn't get out.
Do you have anything else for me, you know, value your time, you know, you have more stuff to happen?
We're running out of time, so.
They've got another five minutes, actually.
You do, if you have any questions.
Moving to communication.
Great. Thank you.
Could I, could I just add one more thing? Yesterday, we had a, our this session for the forest pilot revision, and I will be sending you today a little questionnaire, and if you feel you have any input, just email it back to me. We had about, about 10, 11, 12 people, between 10 and 12 people, some of them were more outspoken of the community, and it really turned out to be a great meeting. And so we, we had planned to have more, so we were going to break out in bigger groups, and they all decided they just wanted to keep together, and so we brainstormed with all of them. And we will be providing kind of a summary of that meeting and back to them, and also to you guys, so you can see what, what they all, what everyone said, the public said during the meeting, so we'll keep you posted.
I apologize, it was on my calendar, but I had a, an emergency at the house.
Not a problem, it was just really a good, and Jim Walsh was there, so he couldn't, but I, we got a lot of feedback. One of the things is still on top of everyone's mind, still the Bear Point Fire, so we're still addressing that, and, but I think you'll see through the comments that a lot of, you know, a lot of thought was put into some of them, what they needed, and things that they would like to see changed, so.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We're going to tell somebody to break, we're going to talk to you.
Could you pardon?
Okay.
Could you get Bobby's phone number from Aunt Helen?
So we're going to KCC, so we're going to move to the sheriff. We have a grave marker request. I'm trying to do some things down before KCC is here. So, I know you, Sheriff, you've talked to us individually, but at this point at this time, you've got some things figured out on this. Just give us sort of an overview of what we're doing.
I'm here to request some funds for a grave marker for a deceased deputy that was killed in the line of duty back in eighteen eighty-two. The deputy is Samuel J. Lewis. He's Lake County Sheriff Deputy. He was guarding a prisoner at the time when a mob attacked him and subsequently murdered him. He has been since laying in the cemetery out here with, out a grave marker. So I'm here asking for some funds either through some kind of budget that you find appropriate or possibly we can take it out of the sheriff's budget. But I find it very disturbing that a deputy killed in the line of duty is laying out there without any recognition or a marker to say who he was.
A little clarity, when you said that mob attacked him, that the mob was actually going for the prisoner?
Actually, the mob was trying, he was guarding the prisoner. The mob attacked the deputy to free the prisoner. After they killed the deputy, they left with the prisoner. And to my knowledge, he's never been taken, the prisoner's never been taken back into custody. And I don't think that's a thing we gotta worry about right now.
I think, no, I think it's, it's not the time. Okay, so getting your cost was actually very reasonable.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is. I contacted the house debtors and I contacted Desert Rose. The maximum that this would cost would be five hundred and fifty dollars. And that's for the military-type granite marker that has the engraving on it and placement. So the total cost for everything would be five hundred and fifty dollars. And that is at the cost of Desert Rose.
My suggestion is to, if you have any material services side, if you have enough money to cover that, to go ahead and do that out of your, for discussion anyways, out of your budget. If not, we will find whichever budget we need to take it out of sheriff. It's all general fund one way or the other. If your budget's tighter than that, which I believe you have plenty of room in there, then we'll, day and night. Can't do it out of capital, it's not a capital. We will find a budget if your budget doesn't happen.
I'm sure we do. And if we do, can I go ahead and just move forward?
Absolutely.
Are we gonna deal with it today then? Because we have it on tomorrow.
Let's eliminate it from tomorrow.
Okay.
By consensus?
By consensus.
Support, just make it happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the work. Larry, you wanted to get on?
Okay.
You're the first.
I was your first.
I was locked out.
All right, we have, uh, Wayne County IBA.
Yes, sir. It's an annual thing for Wayne County, support for our programming and the new one for the search engine on our GIS map.
All the stuff you went over during the...
Yes. So I could hear it again, it'd be pretty good.
Does legal come, come out of the copy?
Yes, I got approval.
Okay.
So that should be good there.
Any other questions?
We'll act on it tomorrow.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Darlin', see, I told you it'd be fast.
I'll be fast, too.
Thank you, Larry.
You know, it looks like you're up, but you asked me last time we met to give you an update on the nuisance. We'll do that tomorrow. I'm gonna go up though after we get done here and I'm gonna go and check out the one. And so, Summer Lake and then also Christmas Valley. Also do Land use, site visit as well. What I've gotten for you now, though, is a resolution dated for tomorrow, which you can make a decision on tomorrow if you'd like, for another property vacation in Silver Lake. Wayne Hand, back in January, February, had requested to vacate east and west roads and the alley between his property. And now he's asking for the undeveloped road, which is Eighth Street in Silver Lake. Resolution just starts the process and then there'll be a hearing forty days out, which will be set for June seventeenth and classified while notices would be certified to the adjacent street. And we'd also notify pretty much everybody inside this undeveloped area. So I've got a new map that I've got prepared that didn't make it to your package yet because I didn't prepare it, but I'm glad to share that with you now.
You're lucky.
Yeah. And I've adjusted kind of what's highlighted. The original highlighted in orange was all the way extending past the block, the next street. And now this would just taken, really, leave a still a way to get through, kind of oddly shaped, but, you know, if you, if you take an intersection, really, you'd only get a corner, southeast corner, northeast corner.
So this would start the process. You'd notify all the Jason High End owners to be utility, part of it.
Yeah. And I've already got word back from Daryl Anderson, our surveyor, and he suggested the way that's laid out and being just that northeast and southeast corners of, that section of the undeveloped Eighth Street.
Seems very odd to vacate and leave a jog like that. It's very odd, but for those other ones to not vacate, you have to do that.
Well, if you look at the land ownership boundaries on the ones to the west, that's the smaller piece that they would get that half of the right way. And then the adjustments that were made on the other, it's a bigger half, a longer half.
We can discuss that on this meeting, where, I mean, this just starts the process.
Okay.
So I do it tomorrow and then I will get up and then I'll make a full report on the nuisances tomorrow.
Have a good trip.
Yeah, thanks.
Hold off on you, if you have two items that...
I have two, but just one. We're waiting until ten thirty. I can get started on the other one. I'm the only one here for that one.
Let me check the hall.
Let's check and see if the seven o'clock people are here.
Okay. They are not here.
Okay, Jake, so you wanted to do the treatment report right now?
Yes, sir. So with the board, we call late two thousand thirteen, early two thousand fourteen Criminal Justice Commission awarded Lake County about seventy-six thousand dollars to be used at programming to reduce our prison population, our prison rate situation. The board asked myself to work with District Attorney and the boards to figure out what kind of program to fit that design. So myself, Judge Nichols, and District Attorney Stapleton got together and created the Lake County Treatment Court. What that does is it starts with District Attorney, yeah, identifies the places coming through here. And there's a risk assessment that he can run, the same risk assessment we utilize in our office. He can access to the internet. He plugs in a number, state ID number, on the client offender. They'll bring up a risk score. If that offender is leaning on high risk and they're, have a substance abuse problem, or the crime's related to drugs, substance abuse, they're eligible for the treatment court program. It also will help. So, once they're eligible for the treatment court program, he will work with the defense attorney on negotiations and see that the client gets enrolled, agrees to enter into the treatment court. Once they're entered into the treatment court, the packet of information that you have before you about the treatment court, that's the nuts and bolts of our program. So, we meet the client, once they agree to enter into the program, they meet with our treatment court coordinator who right now is Barbara Doak. She runs through the orientation packet with them, completes the referral to Lake County Mental Health. There's also an assessment in here. It's called the Eureka. And the Eureka stands for the University of Rhode Island Change Assessment. And what that does is it gives us where they're at, because depending on where they're at, their thinking is at. We, folks that come in, run away in court.
They're thinking.
They, the clients, get their mind and thinking treatment ready. Because a lot of folks come right off the street, substance abusers for a long time, and they, we refer them to treatment. And our treatment success and treatment engagement is low without appropriate sanctions being administered. So we're sanctioning people for not following through a treatment. There's a reason why they're not wanting to, they're not ready for treatment. So, we utilize the Eureka. And that'll give us whether they're pre-contemplative, contemplative, in preparation, action stage, or maintenance stage, or relapse stage. It's a wheel. And we plug it into, if they're pre-contemplative or contemplative, they get plugged into a cognitive skills class to get them thinking and get them talking, excuse me, get them ready for treatment before we start engaging them in actual substance abuse treatment. So, our treatment coordinator does that. Does the referral, and then we schedule, we contact Mental Health and we get that appointment scheduled for that assessment. So Mental Health does the assessment. And before they make their recommendation on level three treatment, which is residential treatment or intensive outpatient treatment, they bring it to our staffing team. And we staff it there because the judge would, Judge Nichols wants some input in that. Our treatment staffing team consists of the judge, our district attorney, myself, the two adult probation officers, Zach Hall and Rachel Frederick, Ben Paz from Mental Health, Crystal Johnson from Mental Health, our treatment court coordinator currently, Barbara Doak, as well as a lay citizen, Kirk Quinlum, Kirk Quinlum, the pastor at the Fay Center, and then Lieutenant, or undersheriff Paul Howell. So we get together, our court sessions are bimonthly, so the second and fourth Fridays, we get together at nine o'clock on those Friday mornings, and we staff the clients in a program from what their treatment compliance is, what their supervision compliance is, what's happening, what can we cover, what's happening. We start to do it. In the last two weeks, the judge had ordered them to do something the last time we were in court. Judge wants to know if that client did that. So we talk about everything right then and there.
Couple questions on the treatment court orientation. It's a twenty-four month program.
Up to twenty-four months, yep.
Okay. It says, it says the program is a minimum of twenty-four months.
And that's very intensive. It is very intensive and up to twenty-four months.
It says minimum of twenty-four months.
Minimum twenty-four months.
And then another question, how, I don't fully understand it. They'll be responsible for all costs associated with treatment court program. I thought some dollars come down to help pay for some of those costs.
There are, but they're, and the costs are going to be levied by the court, by the judge. And some of those costs could be, because part of the program is they take three UAs a week. Those UAs are twenty dollars a possible. So, currently, in community corrections outside of treatment court, our clients are responsible for seven dollars, over twenty to twenty-five dollars a week. Treatment court, depending on their employment and whether at the court, will levy the cost. And the judge has told one individual that he was fully responsible for UAs. So he was coming in and paying.
Well, I've just read through this. All I have is what's there.
Yep.
Whenever a person signs this, it says this is what you will get.
So there are, there are some costs that we could be recouping that needs to be coming upon the court to reduce those costs.
So, the treatment dollars that's coming to us to do this program, what are those dollars spent?
The reinvestment dollars are being spent on the treatment books, the UAs, the cost of the UAs, treatment court coordinator position, which is minimal. And then assessments for clients that don't have the Oregon health plan, a couple working as of yet. We're paying for those assessments. We've bought rewards because evidence has shown that consequences for your negative actions, but also rewarding for positive, positive actions, positive behavior. So we've got some rewards on hand. And we're still trying to figure out all the, all the additional costs. This is new to us here. So when we, when we went to Harney County, Harney County was spending upwards of a hundred thousand dollars a year on their treatment court that they were paying a part-time judge to come down, a part-time judge to come in and handle their treatment court. Judge Nichols is passionate about this and he volunteers his time. He doesn't, he doesn't want any costs.
Okay. I'd just gone through it, spelled out very specific about a lot of things, but it sounds like you do have some latitude.
Yep. And we, April sixth, Judge Nichols, District Attorney Stapleton, myself, and Rachel Frederick, went to Salem and we met with the Criminal Justice Commission as well as all thirty-six counties were represented. There was upwards of four hundred and fifty people there talking about reinvestment monies and what the future looks like. So, Governor Kitsomer, former Governor Kitsomer, put in his budget, he earmarked fifty-eight and a half million dollars towards reinvestment monies. The co-chairs got together for their budget and reduced that to twenty million. Currently, this last biennial, we got fifteen million statewide community corrections. So, there's an increase there. But currently, there, the two sides are negotiating back and forth and it looks like somewhere between thirty and forty million is what we're looking at regardless, and that's statewide community corrections, regardless, minimum, small county, minimum grants will be a hundred thousand dollars for a biennial. So, if we fall in that category where we don't get that big slice of pie, the worst we could do is a hundred thousand, which is twenty-five thousand dollars better than the last biennial. So we're still working through, to spend that money and what that's gonna look like. So we're still working through grant process. And that will open up tomorrow, from Justice Commission will open up the grant process for that. And if we compete, we're gonna compete. Also, with treatment court, Judge Nichols has some grant opportunities from the bench for judges, for specialty courts, and he is interested in applying for those as well to help do whatever the circuit court can do.
So the only thing, you don't need any approval, approval by the board. This is approved through the contract with the state of Oregon.
This was more, what I was here today was more or less just to educate the board and share what we're doing. I would also like to invite the board, it'll be the first Friday in June, I don't have a calendar right in front of me.
First Friday?
The first Friday, June fifth. I'd like to invite the board, June fifth, if you're able, to attend our treatment staffing as well as our treatment court. So you get a firsthand idea of what it looks like and the conversations that are being had.
What time is that?
Nine o'clock in the morning. We meet upstairs in the grand jury room, or excuse me, in the jury room at nine o'clock. And then at ten o'clock, we move into the courtroom. But if you are able. And if you are unable, there are, there will be many opportunities if I take you now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Dr. Pateras and others, we just filled it a little bit, while you were on the, held up in that wonderful construction.
Yes, we are about, we're gonna...
Not a problem.
I heard others, let's say, construction's an excuse. We should have had a better reason.
Well, you never know. I say travel, I do quite a bit, and sometimes you just zip right through and sometimes you hit it with a stop.
Yeah. And a few times I've been here, I'm just that. So Julie, I see Julie say, well, I'm a little bit more closer to the clock. I said, right through the before.
He drives fast, is all I can say.
Anyway, so glad to be here. Glad to give you an update on our partnership, the things that we are doing at KCC, part of accounting here in Lake County. Is that, is that, is that what it is? Just an overview of the things that we are doing. And we do have the budget, but I think the regular session is tomorrow. I do have a copy of the budget and I'll go through that too, toward the end. I'll go through the possible changes that we're looking at, which are, so I'll start with programs and then after, and then I'll talk a little bit about the RN program, again, the budget, some of the grants that we've acquired through partnerships together. And one that we are about to go, we're about to expand the campus, probably double. So that total is about seventeen million dollars that, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So, one of the new programs that we just got is the RN program. We couldn't have done that without the partnership of Lake County. And actually, the hospital, the CEO, we were very closely with Charlie and the hospital. And, and obviously, the curriculum of the RN program is rural nursing. And so there's just another effort of working together through strong partnerships. And institutions are gonna be, are gonna move forward in these times of, there is a lot of monies. You've gotta have strong partnerships. So this is an example of that. So the program starts, actually, summer, it is our LPM program, licensed practical nursing, that's a one-year program. Those students will go right into the regular program in the fall. So we have a full approval of that. And that's probably, I was very much involved with that program and leading in Salem with nursing board. And I would say that's probably the most difficult, hardest program I've ever been part of. And I, I worked with programs. I was, I was provost at another institution. And I overseen all the college programs. And I would say that was the most difficult. And, you know, and it should be, because, you know, these students work at us. And they better know what they're doing. We don't want them to experiment on us. So anyway, but it was, but we got it done. But my point is, it couldn't have happened without the strong partnership of Lake County. So there's just a strong indication how both counties will work together to have one strong program. And we are looking at other programs. So with that, I'll turn over to give an overview and maybe other people wanna come in. Julie, because Julie is our vice president of external programs and she oversees this and other places in California and other, other programs. So she's on point when it comes to Lake County, so.
So being with external programs, I don't know that I've had the opportunity to meet the two of you. I know we've met a couple of times. So Dan, my name is Julie Murray-Jensen. And so as part of external programs, I get to come over to Lakeview at least once a month and meet with the staff here. And I've gotta say, you guys are a gem. We constantly point to Lakeview as an example of innovation, the greenest red county. We use that often with some of the innovation that you all have done. So Calameth has certainly looked at that as an example. So it's great, it's a mutual leadership.
I'd like those to the folks who are in the audience.
Absolutely. What I wanted to point out, my goodness, Sean Gallagher has been such a key partner and, and just really has become a good friend. And I'm just... And I'm just, you know, devastated at the last, but at the same time, I wish him well, but he's just been fantastic. You know, Kristi Twain, boy, what can I say? That was, you know, I, I, I always say Kristi on my staff is my superstar. Like she does everything well, I mean, everything. And so her reviews, we spend maybe ten minutes because it's so, you know, how many times can you say you're amazing? And so she really is doing great work for Lake County. And Emma, obviously, is a very strong chair, has that history and has worked with Warner Creek, has just been that expert opinion. And then Jim and his assistant Kelly have, have always been the experts in terms of grants and how do we get money? And boy, they give money too. And you all know, the recent Meyer money that we earned after a very difficult interview. I think Jim told me it was one of his most challenging where we had earned a USDA grant to put synchronous classrooms, I'm sure you know this, throughout rural Oregon, including another one in Lakeview. And so Jim had to make our case and it has gotten really tough. Grants will come to me at KCC, it has gotten really, really progressively tougher to get grant money. And so Jim, again, came through again, it's, it's remarkable. And so we have a lot of strong partners in this room and I'm really grateful for that. So I just have a couple of updates and Kristi may want to add in.
I do.
As I talk here, she does, and I welcome that because she really is our local expert. But I will tell you, enrollment is looking really, really healthy. Um, we're at just under sixty students last I heard. And so what that means is that we're nearly double what we were our first year. We're finishing our second year and because we've been able to add synchronous classroom, it's not really surprising. Now, last year, I would say our numbers were pretty even between distanceed online classes and synchronous or in-person. And now I believe it's more biased towards synchronous in-person because we have that classroom. And so when I think about educational impact, lots of folks learn well online, but boy, nothing takes away from that in-person, at least on a screen. Uh, it's quite, I think, an effective model that really is, is being looked at across the state in terms of being integrated. So we're thrilled about that with the numbers. We expect them to continually increase. Uh, the USDA grant that we got, we are going to add one more classroom. I believe it's going to be located at the ILC. We were looking at the high school or the ILC. And so that's going to increase the accessibility even more. Um, we just actually sent a staff member over, we're real big on trying to connect in-person. So I come over at least once a month, but we send other staff too. So we, you might know that we launched a whole series of community ed classes in Lakeview this year, many of them in partnership with the mentorship program. So our community ed coordinator comes over too, on a regular basis to meet face-to-face with the mentor program, with the ESD, and really figure out how they're going to work too. We also, a couple of weeks ago, sent over our dual credit coordinator. So we do lots of high school credit and college credit together at the same time. It's a real efficient way for students to really accelerate what they're able to get done debt-free. And so our dual credit coordinator came over, spent the day with Sean's staff and met with a whole plethora of teachers and they're in the approval process now to be able to teach the college courses. And so again, the more we can do in-person and really give that individual attention, really makes this partnership thrive. And so I would say those are two things that we can all point to with a lot of pride with our high school connections and with our, with our community. In fact, our community ed class right now is welding. Uh, I think there's about six students that are enrolled.
Eleven.
Eleven? Oh my goodness!
Right, here's one.
Oh, that's right!
One by place.
Exactly. I, I think we even have tonight there was six, but there are eleven total enrolled, that's great. That's better than I even thought. And so that's been, I mean, that's something Sean has been tugging me about for two years. And so we finally got that done, which is really exciting.
We have some graduates coming up, graduation from Lake.
Well, that's the other thing. So when we started at Lake County, of course, I did my due diligence and I talked with the Treasure Valley folks. And I remember Treasure Valley saying to me, you know, gosh, we've been working with Lake for years now and we've only had, I think it was one or two graduates, you know, in all of this time. And so of course, we're evaluated on our ability to help students improve their degrees. So this is a little bit of concern that we're going to invest all this time, energy and stuff and not have it for freezers. But this year alone, we have five or six?
We have six. We have two that have already graduated, I don't know if you saw this in the Lake County Examiner, but Hope was our first graduate. Hope was accepted into OHSU's RN program at OIT. Ashley Chin is our second graduate, she also was accepted into OHSU's RN program at OIT. And at the end of spring term, we have four more students graduating and they're all going on, two to OSU, one to Eastern Oregon, and the other ones undecided at this point.
Isn't that great? That's just, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if you know how big of a deal that is. It's, it's, it's amazing in our second year that we're already there. And I'm telling you, OIT, we just had a meeting with their cabinet and ours and they said to us, you know, we, you need to prepare your graduates with alternative plans because our program's really difficult to get into. And rightly so, OIT grad right there, Sean, and they have great programs. They really produce high-paying jobs, very skilled folks in the workforce. And so to have two that were accepted is certainly a kudo, a coup for us.
When I came here two years ago, I was asked a question by a couple of leaders in the state about coming to Lake. We tried that, they don't have that population base. One of my leadership values is you do the right thing for the right reasons. And I came in here and worked with people and it'll put something, I mean, really, we're, we are going to be now, now a lot of these rural high schools because of the grant that we really have. North Lake, Paisley, even all the way to California and so on. You do the right things for the right reasons and good things are.
That's right, absolutely.
And that's a testament to the quality of folks, including yourselves and folks in the audience.
It's been a strong team effort.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, it has.
And as you know, I've got two things, education and communication.
That's right.
And that's what this else, and the ILC, ILC has provided.
Well, that, yeah, that tone is clearly set here, we appreciate that. It's, whenever I come to Lakeview, I always tease this group because I always say, yeah, you guys always give me a huge to-do list. This group, because we have a lot on our agenda. And so we've made it, you know, now we have an ILC board. And so I come over once a month, we meet with our Lake County KCC Board Advisory Group at noon and then we have our ILC Committee Meeting at night. And, and so we're strongly involved, obviously, in both efforts and, and there's a lot every month on the agenda. Like it's, it's cranking along, it really is thriving. And we're really happy with that.
One-on-one interaction and especially on the professor being on the screen. As you know, there's a human primordial instinct of being prograrious.
That's right.
And that fulfills that, that basic need of a human to be able to interact face-to-face.
That's right. Well, and the other exciting thing we did this year, you probably know this, is we launched our GED services. So we hadn't had GED services, I think, in Lakeview for quite a few years.
So I have a chance.
It's a tough test, it's a tough test. And they did actually change the test about a year ago and it's pretty rigorous. So we launched GED and I'll, I'll tell you, it's not, you know, it's certainly not, it's an investment. There are five to eight students and so when we did the math, you know, it doesn't pencil out when you look at the staffing that we're providing, but is it the right thing to do? Absolutely. We're looking for creative ways, you know, how can we get Kristi more support? And also provide that support, which is run through our Calameth Adult Learning Center. And so we're looking for efficiencies and there's a lot of eagerness between folks to come together with creative solutions. So that's exciting, yeah.
Well, you look for efficiencies, don't let the one-on-one face-to-face slip.
Absolutely, it's so critical, yeah.
That's why we have, we try to have sometimes faculty come on here and beam the courses back to, to, you know, to KCC campus, so.
Well, and there's like, you know, Kristi, bottom, I mean, there's a lot of creative, okay, how can we, you know, how can we make this work? How can we give these students the very same resources that they have in Calameth? Like how do we do that creative ways with technology, with staffing and make it sustainable? And so that's what we're all focused on.
And I think it's on the budget, we're going to get a van, especially for the RN students coming back and forth and so.
Right?
So we're getting a van, so we're looking for creative ways, so.
Go ahead. So Dr. Gutierrez, as you're talking about this, Julie's talking about the different progresses that we've made in having been in, you know, as a commissioner since the TBC days. Emma was heavily involved in that.
That's right.
Superintendent Gallagher and others. The very reason that this is successful is everything that's being said here. The involvement, the hands-on, the creativeness, the, the desire to be able to provide those educational opportunities and services, that. When you, when you mention TBC and it's not a slight to them, they're a long ways away, unlike, you know, the, the KCC campus. But it is literally like comparing apples to watermelon.
Yeah.
It, some of these things could not have happened without all of us, like I think you mentioned earlier. When I first came in here, I was looking for that because many times there's just a lot of talk. But here, actually, what I've seen, not just talk, there was actually, some of the people actually pushed me, well, we're done with that yet or whatever. So really, it was a strong, that told me, okay, this is, we're going in the right direction because we're working together as a strong partner. So this cannot be done alone because we are very purposeful at KCC. We are about student success, we are about giving, you know, we're dealing with issues with poverty and so on. We use education to bring people back to middle class, not middle and upper, we've got to have that. And it's here, the same, so there's that purpose to lift people up and using education to do that is here. And we're actually very honored to work with Lake County and school this year and the team that's here. I mean, I think even some of the grants, I mean, I think it's for over, close to two million dollars in just some of the stuff that we've done. Yeah, it's quite a bit and, and by working together. And, and we, we just, we just got a pretty good-sized one at, at KCC that allows, it's going to double. The total is going to be working with the state and the grant there and Department of Commerce, it's going to be about seventeen million. Really, it's going to, it's going to really expand it and we're really focusing on synchronous courses. That's really the way in the future, you know, live, to bring these courses to these rural high schools and so on. So we call them level five classrooms. Uh, so we're going to focus this as we expand KCC into more modern areas, areas that are underserved. And we're really going into college credit right at the high school. Uh, we're really focusing on that, we're getting a lot of attention throughout the state. Uh, because if students are going to be successful, that's what they need, they need a leg up right at the high school.
That's right.
Yeah, so, anyway, so really, uh, making some strong pathways in the city because we got four or five pathways right at the high school. Anyway, uh, so some good things are happening. We're, we're glad to have Lake County, that's part of our strong partners. We're going to do even more, so.
One thing, the only other thing I would mention that is on my list is we're hoping to have some CNA training here this summer. So you might know, that's a big need for you guys. And apparently, the CNA instructor you used to have.
For the camera audience, CNA is?
Oh, yes, Certified Nursing Assistant. I, I wasn't even aware of that, so thank you. So, yes, so for the CNA, that's a, that's a real need for the community. And so Charlie Twain came to the ILC board and asked. And so I went back and, and working with our CNA instructor and what could we creatively do? Do we, do we house her during the summer? You know, what, what can we do synchronously, what can we do in person? You know, a lot of CNA is like lifting patients, like, you know, showers, you can't really do a lot of that synchronously. So what can we do? And so what, one thing I've noticed with Lakeview, this is Kristi, this is Charlie, this is Emma, this is Sean, they very strongly advocate for their needs and then we have, it sounds like Kristi. You know, Kristi will call me, Julie, we need this. And, but we are very responsive to that because we know it's true and it comes from the heart and it makes sense. And then Sean has been such a great person of really inspiring partnership. So we're always looking at, how can we creatively do this? And so Marilyn, you know, our instructor for CNA, we're talking about all kinds of options. Okay, if we pay for this hotel and she was there three days a week and then if we, you know, there's just a lot of really creative work happening to meet the needs. And that is a really deep commitment on both sides, it couldn't just be one side. It's on both sides, there's a lot of hustle. And so I'm, I could not be more pleased. It's, it's a model, it's really an example of a model program.
Talking about the topic of values, what drew me to Lakeview, I passed through it many years, going and coming. But there was just a sense of good, solid rural values and interest in the kids, big interest in the kids and the education. And that's why we have the type of folks we have.
The CNA is.
Jim is not retiring.
I know.
That's true.
You're not getting rid of me.
You agree.
Just, CNA is Certified Nursing Assistant, that's KCC's winning, that's a really entry level, entry level. And sometimes that testing ground, if students want this kind of work. Uh, so, and then they have the LPM, which is a licensed practical nursing. And that's a one-year, usually that is licensed, you've got to take a test. Then you have the full RN program. Then you have the BSN and the BSN makes up some of the social skills in some areas. But a lot of the practical work is really in the RN program. And that's why it's so rigorous, uh, the clinical sites and licenses and so on. So those are the three areas, but now, obviously, we've got the RN. A little bit about the budget.
Before you go there.
Okay.
We have the USDA loan and got the equipment for our synchronous going, both here in Lakeview, Paisley and North Lake. And we have it in the KCC building here. How there's a tie interconnected with Paisley and North Lake, I was in town.
You, well, I know that we're struggling, I know Julie obviously very much in love with this, with our IS program, I'm popular. I know that North Lake, where it looks like it may be okay, but basically, we're struggling a little bit because of the internet connection. It's a little bit of a struggle in that area, but we're still trying to do that. Actually, it was, so maybe give us a background on that, let me know someone. And I know that Paul and Anthony have had struggles with the internet connection at Paisley.
Yeah, there's been some, you know, some internet technology bandwidth issues. The communication has also been a little bit of a challenge in that we had a superintendent that, I think, was leaving his post but may still be staying.
He's going to stay.
And so I think there was some uncertainty for a while and so it's been difficult connecting with him. But I think they're on board now.
Yeah.
And so we're moving ahead and they certainly seem like a great community and we want to serve them. So we just have to, you know, put our nose to the grindstone now. So they're not on the fall list because we literally couldn't reach him. But it will be shortly after that, as soon as we work on the bandwidth issues, which are struggles, but we're trying to work through them.
We talked about earlier about strong partnership is two ways. So we need to have some communication, I think we're sort of getting there now.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it. North Lake's been more responsive because I think they had a clear set of who was doing what. And so we are going to plow away, they'll probably be right after, Lake is really our priority for fall. And then after that will come North Lake and then after that, I would guess, over the next year, it will be Paisley.
Well, if you have that communication breakdown going forward, I drive by the school every night.
Oh, good!
So please let me know.
Please, well, yes, and.
I was not aware of.
Yeah, and I, and I don't certainly mean, mean to throw anyone under the bus because I think there was some genuine, um, changes and I'm not sure, but now I think it's probably settled down and we can make progress.
Because, we had a meeting, first meeting again.
We did and they, they didn't come.
Didn't come and we didn't even hear from them, what they were, not even, so.
And I reached out again.
Anyway, there must have been a reason for that, but.
Yeah, yep.
So.
Yep, that was when the invite, they were face-to-face.
Yes, yeah, and that's what we did, we invited them and everybody was there.
North Lake came, North Lake was obviously there, but.
But I think this is, this looks like we're headed in the right direction now.
We're, we're working on it, yeah.
The current bandwidth of the internet, is it up to par for your services now?
So our, our IS director, he's, he's a, the guy's a genius, I mean, he's a, he's a bright guy. Um, and he's tackled a number of schools at this time that have bandwidth issues. And so I think my guess is we will find a way. But we're still in that process, it's not a done deal yet, and that, there, there could be a real obstacle there.
Well, Tommy Dodd of TNET is the one that took it upon himself to get broadband increased to Paisley. And he totally, he took Baltimore bandwidth, so interact with Tommy.
Okay, what was that in Tommy?
Tommy Dodd.
Tommy Dodd, TNET. My understanding from Susanna with the Regional Solutions Team, they, she got involved with the governor's office and they got OPB to donate a, a building and some of the, uh, technology or the place to put a new tower for TNET. So it seems like it's coming together. I don't know how far it's on, but they're working, we've got a whole team. So if it doesn't work, make sure we get back to the regional solutions. We've got a whole team, so if it doesn't work, make sure we get back to the regional solutions team and get the governor's office.
Good to know.
Yeah, to help us make it, because they, they thought they could do that, but they didn't stand it lately. But that's what they were working on, same.
Good to know, thank you.
After they put that in, I talked to the administrative assistant there, Molly O'Leary, and she was highly impressed now whether or not for the other leg of the technology, maybe not so much, but she said it is, it is just completely.
Well, I'll reach out again and certainly your conversations with the superintendent, have him connect with us because there has been a disconnect.
Yeah.
And nobody knows, that's a busy position and, you know, and there's lots of time, but we need, we do wanna start getting on it, so.
I think it's important tonight because we're doing some, I alluded to the pathways earlier and others throughout the state. We're doing some very innovative things, council pathways. Why don't you talk about the pathways, the K twelve coming, coming to us, and then I'm gonna talk about Southern Oregon University.
Okay, sure.
It's important that there's no loss of credit. And what happens, a lot of these things sometimes are not academically prepared and so the pathways will help with that, so they're more academically prepared. And then they're, they come to us, hit the ground running and then move on to a university like S O U. O I T too, but mostly right now we've got a strong, we have a signing ceremony coming up with S O U. Again, it's important that we, taxpayers, we pay many times, so if they're not academically prepared, they, they pay at the college again. And then on again at the university because there's lots of credit, we're done with that. Well, that's not how we can handle business. We will have no loss of credit guarantees and that's our mantra that's going on throughout the state. So S O U has gotten on board with that. So why don't you talk about the pathways a little bit and then I'll talk about S O U. And there's five of them, I believe.
Yes, and I don't know if you've had a chance to read the front page of the home reviews today.
Not today.
But there's, if you have an opportunity, so there's a story about a student, and he's, he's in Calamit. But he's a student, that young Hispanic man in one of our rural high schools, who never imagined being able to go to college. His parents wanted him to, but they didn't have the finances. So it's a story about him being able to come to college or advanced to form a program. And so our vision is to really create what we're calling a blended model where every kid, so it's institutionalized, right? It's not just the upper twenty percent that their kids went to college. It's every single kid in high school has the opportunity to accumulate college credit. And nine hours is an achievement compacts, but we would like students to accumulate as much as they can when they're ready. Right, a lot of it's tenth, eleventh in grades, so it's the upper grades, so that they can get to sort of a tipping point in earning a certificate or a degree. We know this works. We've seen this in Texas, we've seen this in other states.
We did it last year.
We did it last year, yes.
So this, this student, we, we did a beta test and he came and he got his, Jonathan, we know, so we beta tested this. In other words, see if it worked, beta tested it. And then he got his associate's degree at the high school and he finished that with no, no loss of credit and no student debt.
That's right.
And he moved on to O I T.
Yes, now he's at O I T.
He's our model and we're gonna replicate this throughout and now the rest of the state wants to know how we're doing this. But, and that's what we want. So that means that possibly all the way to a certificate and another degree rather than high school. Now, I've been questioned, well, how do you, you get paid by the F T E students, so it's gonna affect you. You do the right things for the right reasons. We're gonna do this. Other things will take care of themselves. This is one of those. We're gonna do it because it's important. As you probably know, not more than ever, that if you don't have some kind of post-secondary education, you're gonna be poor. This is the new workforce throughout the nation. And it's not like us that we could go to a male or, you know, like our parents or our grandparents. This new generation, you better have something after high school or else you're not, you're gonna be poor. And, and we, we're driven, we are driven by that, anyway.
Well, we are, you know, we, you'll hear things like college for all or college and career for all. And I know there are folks in our community that bristle because I'm, I know everybody should go to college. But you've gotta understand that our definition of college is much water. You could get a phlebotomy certificate, right? And take blood, yeah, take blood. You could get welding certificate, you know, something that's some sort of workforce training or transfer. Because lots of these folks might wanna get bachelor's degrees too. That's great. It's all stackable, every credit counts. And it's, you know, it is tough work because we literally have to go through every high school's curriculum and tie it to our curriculum. So there's no loss of credit and map the degree pathways, which are, it's complicated, right? You think it'd be simple? No, 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 no. The crosswalks, there's lots of options and so we're trying to simplify, make it very transparent so that students can follow their progress. They get as much done as they can and then they can go on to a job or to, to a bachelor's.
So the high school students are getting prepared for the regular college. And those high school teachers are actually teaching on expectations. I mean, we wrote a grant on some of this and that we used a grant and for the first time, some college, some high school teachers and college professors are talking to one another. And that was the first meeting I'm going, why, this could have happened years ago. It's like, it just makes perfect sense that it's happening and it's, they're talking, we're communicating. Again, we taxpayers benefit from that.
That's right.
Society benefits.
Absolutely.
And they're equal partners. I think it used to be the colleges who would point to K twelve.
Oh, that's easy.
You know, well, if they were just bringing us more prepared students, no, we've really stopped that. And the four-year needs to stop that with us too. We are all equal educational partners in these times of budgetary limits. We have to band together. And so that's what we're committed to doing.
So the pathways, one of them is the business pathway.
It's the business, early education, computer science, criminal justice, business.
Yeah, we're missing more now. Anyway, there's five of them.
There are five of them. I know, you're putting them to the spot now.
Me too. So anyway, it's like all of them.
So, yeah, education, early ad, transfer, that's what it is. We're at transfer, yeah, criminal justice and business.
So, so high school, us, and, and, I think it's next week the signing ceremony with some of the universities. Guaranteed, no loss of credit, if a student follows the pathway all the way through. I think the criminal justice will be there for instance at S O U. And now for the first time, just like Oregon State University, they don't have to leave our area to get their teaching certificate right at our campus and we hope to beam some of those courses right here using our technology. The teaching one, all the way, we're even talking about all the way to the master's degree right out of our campus. But using technology, they, one of the big surprises for me is that universities don't have the technology that we have. You know, even, even though you're not careful with that camera, but anyway. But it's like a lot of surprise, as a matter of fact, we had to actually lend the technology to S O U.
I know, exactly.
And I was, I was talking to one of our board members, I said, so are they on the stomach plan or what? And you have to say that in jest, but, but anyway, they're a good partner and we are really looking forward to working with S O U.
That's right.
They are really willing to and, so anyway, we'll have the signing ceremony, I believe it's next week.
Well, S O U has a, they have a bachelor's degree in business, I think it's business of applied science or something. And it, what they're gonna do is any of our career technical degrees, the first two years they will give us. And any of those students, like you can get a culinary degree and then go into their bachelor's of applied, I think it's business actually. It's applied business and you can get your bachelor's. So if you wanna own a restaurant, you know, you could get your culinary for two years and then go get your bachelor's and, you know, so they, they're really, they're, it's a bit easier to work with them because they're, O I T is such a technical school, which is great for some of our STEM pathways and our new computer science program and our manufacturing, things like that. But there are other programs that are a better fit with S O U. So it's been, it's great to have both, you know, for options.
So what kind of dialogue are we having, both at the four-year, the two-year, the high school? I bring this up almost every time. Relative to our communities, where our students come from, having job opportunities in those communities after they graduate or after they get their certificate. Because that's, I think, very key. We have a lot of need, but the educational system educates certain areas and then you get your degree and you have to go somewhere else to get a job because it doesn't fit with the communities you come from. Using Lake County National Resource Base back, I mean, community, that's, that's at the heart of what, a lot of what we do. So I know that's just another.
Oh, that's a, that was our grant. That was our grant.
Yes, yes, it was. We're very sensitive to this of the community college because we are, we are an economic engine for the community in the county. It's where our community college is. I like some universities that it takes them a while, like the big fellowship, takes them a while to turn. We are like the, the speedboat. I mean, this is what we do. We start our programs and we should shut them down too at the same time, fast. You know, according to the needs of the community and, and the state. So an example of some of the areas here that we had some conversations, one of them was the welding. We had some conversations, Sean had some on welding because there was a need in agriculture. The other one was the agri-greed and that's the O S U connection, all the way to the O S U, again, no loss of credit. That was our first strong partnership, that they don't have to leave the area, you know, to. So, but we're having more conversations, is do we have more of the I T area, is there a need for that in the I T? The, the computer science area, you know, there are need for that and so on. But it is, it is limited sometimes, but we try to focus what are the needs of the area and how can we provide students for that. And sometimes also on the business area because they create their own jobs too. So then we have a student that's innovation, that business innovation background and then we teach them to do that. And then they create jobs and they stay here. But it helps if they're from here because they wanna stay here.
That's right.
You know, if they're from Nebraska.
It has to be a mix. It has to be a blend.
Yeah.
On the I T with the new equipment, we're still trying to push to get broadband out to the homesteads. Is there any way for a kid at home during his weekends, you know, offhand doing some work, to interface in some fashion with the K C C and I L C?
If they have the internet, but you're talking about if they don't have.
Well, oh, when they do have it.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
There's lots of online.
Online stuff.
We have, we have two totally online degrees, which is, they gotta have to give a credit our faculty. We've gone twenty half years ago from no online, zero, zero online K C C. Twenty half years later, two degrees totally online.
Over two hundred students just online.
That's amazing. Credit to our faculty, how, how well they've done in that, they had just did that. That's a big change, so.
A part of that question is, let's say, I'm sitting at home and you have interactive professor on a screen at K C C, can I access it?
That, that is.
No.
One step forward.
Yeah.
We could, maybe with Skype or something like that, where we could set up something where we Skype from the classroom and show synchronously to the student. We should be able to do that, but in terms of hooking into the system, no, can't do that.
It's, it's on the future path.
Yes, yes, yeah. Well, and once we just finished about a week ago, K C C is, we built our studio four twenty-four.
Yeah, that's a change.
What that is, is that we basically converted what really was kind of a large storage closet into a studio so that we can beam our professors on the high school time or on the college time, so that we might be able to do some creative things like that. So we'll have our professors in this sort of studio and they can be recorded and it could be to be seen later or it could be real time too. And so that's a totally new thing. Nobody else is doing that.
There's no students in front of them, like you can't.
That's right, and they're by themselves. And so it's gonna be, yeah, that's gonna be a little learning curve as a professor in the nose, you know. It's gonna be a little bit of a, like I said, a change, but that's, that's gonna open up some possibilities to their creativity.
I think we head in that direction.
One last thing. We have a diverse population. How is it represented at the running center for K C C?
In terms of what, Ken? You mean age groups and I have everything from, you know, juniors in high school, we have eleven high school students.
Not, not age, but Hispanic, Asian.
We have.
Arkeys from Arkansas.
I have several Hispanic students and I just got a new one yesterday that's coming back to school after having been out for nine years. I think Ashley Chen is, you know, our second graduate, she's of Asian descent. So I think that we probably have a fair cross-section of what our county actually is in terms of demographics are represented. I have, you know, from, from the sixteen, seventeen-year-old to the fifty-one-year-old and everything in between. So I think that we have a pretty big cross-section of our.
And we have some E S L classes.
We have E S L classes going on now.
E S L.
English as a second language, yeah, sorry.
And I just wanted to add to that because, and, and thank you to Sean for the, you know, push to make us be able to have a campus. It allows students to get together and when students get together, you find out that diversity is just a matter of opinion. Everybody's got, you know, their experience and their opinion and their backgrounds. And I teach, I'm lucky enough to teach in-person classes here in Lake County. So they do have that one, you know, that their writing classes can, can be in person. And what's amazing to me is how diverse they're, they are as a class. You know, not just in ethnicity or age, which does exist, that diversity exists in the classroom, but also just in their experience and their exposure and, and where they've been in life and where they're coming from. And that's really what college is all about, is having that interaction with your professor and with the other students. And it can happen in an in-person classroom. It also happens in a synchronous classroom. But having the building really makes a huge difference because then they interact in the hallway. We have a study hall now which has wonderful, comfortable furniture and, you know, so they have conversations. There's also the diversity of having the A D P students, they're quite young. And so then we get this, that's the advanced diploma program, so they're, they're, they're just out of high school. And it's just, it's, it's amazing that they, they are learning truly college skills at a very, you know, with these beginning class, you know, these, these classes that are in the classroom and the classes that are on the synchronous thing, they're learning their research skills. They're talking about things they've never had a chance to talk about before because maybe they're just, you know, there, there's a lot of opinions about some of these significant topics and so they're, they're getting to learn how to be academically credible. You know, how to, how to, how to, how to identify what's a good source on the internet, which is a very difficult task these days. And so those really basic college skills are gonna really help them, not just in, you know, to get their certificate and their degree, but they're gonna help them all the way through life to, you know, to not be bamboozled by the culture. They'll, they'll have college skills and then the campus makes all the difference in the world. Whether it's coming through on the T V or in the classroom or whatever, having that building where they get together and see that they're not alone. That's crucial. So thank you.
Probably the only diversity that we haven't gotten to as fully as I had hoped is with Warner Creek. So we did start, we did some non-credit classes there for a couple of terms and we just couldn't get the adults in custody to pay for credit. And so that's been difficult. I know the G E D program there is provided by Treasure Valley. And so it's been difficult to make that operation sustainable. And so we're no longer there, although we're picking up a cougar from there today, a piece of art that we're gonna try to sell at our foundation event to create student scholarships. So we're, we're trying to find creative ways, but that is something that didn't flourish like I had hoped it would.
This was difficult because it was possible, we had some authority to cut back on tuition for some of the inmates there. But then we talked, well, what about the, the middle-class family? That was the same thing too. And here we are, so we said, no, okay, you have a lot, a lot of art here, how about if you sell that and you pay for the tuition to do that?
Tried to do that.
That's right, so see the factor, that could afford the bill. So, so anyway, and that's, and we're trying to do that so that they sell the art on our auction coming up.
That's right. It was all donating materials.
They go to an account and then they can pay for the tuition.
Yep, so we're hoping and then we could offer some credit courses there, so.
So there will be no cut tuition for them, just like anybody else.
Right, right.
How much time do we have?
We better move on to the budgets, like we run way behind today.
So Eric, our CFO, we're in the middle of budget season at the college. So he said, okay, I'm working on, I said, let me see if I can do the budget for you. I do have copies of this, so, so let me go through quickly through the budget here. So now, you know that because Lake is a non-passing district, we have two parts. One of them, all students pay fifteen percent more on tuition from Lake County. So that's one area, how we try to justify some of the expenditures. And then the other one is, I believe it's up to twenty percent of our expenditures that I believe it comes from the commissioner. So that's the two parts. There's been, there's been a few changes because we're getting more enrollment. That means, that means we have more expenditures, so that's kind of a little bit. As far as we spend more money, so, and we're at, we're looking at eighteen percent, I think we can go up to twenty percent. We're at eighty percent of the expenditures and I believe that's on the last page. That is really the only difference. So for, that expenditures for fourteen and fifteen, I believe is sixteen thousand dollars. Now, and if you have questions on this, this is a draft, please let us know. And we proceed and I don't know if you've read your session or where you would have to approve it, but the signatures are at the bottom. And Eric and I just got done with this at eight o'clock as we went through this, so. So the enrollment's a little bit higher, so we are getting more from those students. And Eric and I just got done with this at eight o'clock as we went through this, so, um, so the rooms are a little bit higher, so we are getting more from those students, I don't know how much higher they are from last year, maybe ten percent higher than yours, so I think that's the last I look at.
Well, we, and adding a classroom has been significantly higher.
Yeah, 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 um, so again, that's why we have the more expenditures, again, and you see that, all of that, very end.
So the agreement's very sim- similar to the one we had last year.
Yes, it's actually the, it's something similar.
The cap's at twenty-two thousand, the cap, the most exposure for the.
That's right, that's right. That's right, it's twenty-two thousand, and we're at, because I told them, I wanted to know what it is right now, they said it's sixteen thousand, so we're not, we're not, we're not at the cap yet, so we're sixteen thousand.
So can we, can we send this over to Denise, because we, we have a few changes that the terrorists need to make, as far as the signature, uh, this year, portion of winners is the chair.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the sign that needs to be changed on.
Okay, absolutely, please, and then, let us know if you have that and other questions, and, and then we'll just, just let, let know the changes, and then we'll, we'll make those changes, send it back to you, and then, and then we go.
We are looking at increasing our investment, um, in the I L C this year, and that we are looking at hiring a halftime person to help Christie. I was told today I could let you know this, Christie, so this is, this is good news for you.
Hallelujah.
So, so, just as an example, this spring, the I L C was open about fifty-five hours a week, and so for one person to cover that, we've been using students, very good students, to help supplement that, but it's just not sustainable. And so, we are increasing our investments, so that this can continue to grow, and that's, you know, there's a real cost with that, it's a halftime position with, um, you know, any related benefits that are required, and. So that's something for you to be aware of as you look at the agreement.
What really helps is that, uh, where we're at, the I L C, that actually hosted by the, kind of, Lake County School District, we appreciate that, because there's, we're able to do this, because there's no, there's, there's no rent there. There's no rent, and we appreciate that, that's why we're able to justify that to my board, because I keep telling them, we're not being charged to be there.
That's right.
I mean, they're, they're good partners, oh, okay, okay, so that, so anyway, that's how we justify that halftime decision, um, more of an investment, um, or if we can, so.
So, to wrap up, we've heard all the good stuff, is anything that needs to be worked on from our end?
I think we already talked about Casey a little bit, because I was a little concerned with that, and again, if equal partnership, we can have that both ways, uh, Warner Creek, I mean, if, if it doesn't work, and we're not gonna cut our tuition for that, so I just don't think that that's what I could do there, and I'd go for middle-class families.
Warner Creek.
This is gonna continue, so, in work, I think we, we need to, I'm a little bit concerned, because, but you reassured me that you are retiring, but then you're kinda not, and you're still gonna be connected, because the grants, the grants allow us to do this. This equipment is on, it really is a shot in the arm, so.
I'll clarify that, yes, in time, probably the end of August, I go halftime, but I'm staying on as long as L C R keep me until probably seventy, because of a few things, one is I L C. Kelly and I just got back from a funders meeting in Medford, that we go every year, there must have been eight, nine foundations there.
Probably more, yeah.
Probably more, and then you pick the ones, you read through their, their criteria, what they give to, so I concentrated on the I L C and went to four or five, all of them wanna give.
That's great.
You know, we're waiting right now, Sean's gonna advertise the building to completely remodel, the second floor and the third floor up, and then we're gonna see where we're at, because I've got these foundations, this is so unique in a rural area. I tell you, it's the easiest fundraising I've ever had, it's just a pleasure to walk in, because they're going, yeah, yeah, give us a proposal, you know, they wanna be part of it, you know? And so, and I will be here halftime because of that and a couple of other things I wanna see done, plus introduce my replacement to funders, because building funding relations is what the position's about, and that, that you need to. Be introduced gives a person a step up if they have, don't have those already made, so.
Probably a problem for us is that, um, because we're so innovative, uh, there's serious headhoney going on for the, for the leadership of the institution. You know, so then, uh, you know, and Eric is one of those, and he's been solid after, uh, and he's, so Eric is moving on to, uh, to Coos Bay, um, so, but we were gonna start as a new CFO, so. Uh, you know, and Julie, you've been, they've been after you too, I mean, so, uh, obviously, you know, myself also, I mean, so, but I've made a commitment to this area, I really have, and I told that to my board, so. But that, that is a problem, I mean, so, as other institutions want what we are doing here for, for our students, for our community, they want the same, so then, they try to go after the leadership of the institution, so, and I understand. I don't like it, but I understand, right, Julie?
We truly respect you as Sean.
Yes, that's right, that's right, that's another.
You wouldn't allow me to be a, a reference.
Right, that's right.
Coos Bay, uh, Shanghai, several Lake County folks in the past years, need to do something about this.
Go back, back to the budget and what you said, Julie, about going to have a halftime person and to consider that in this, and what I read in here is, if there's a change, we need to consider up to twenty-five thousand, is that what you're referring to?
Okay, the, the halftime.
Because we have to budget, and we're right in the middle of our budget thing, so I'd like to get that sort of hammered down, what we're talking about.
Yes. I would assume that would affect.
Bottom of the front page, Dr. James.
Yes, but, um, the salaries.
The salary for the halftime person, is that what you're looking at?
Well, what, what it says here is, both parties agree that it's opportunity to rise for new programs, which may lead to increased enrollment and service to Lake County. Both parties are prepared to consider amending this contract to allow for an increase up to twenty-five thousand.
Well, especially with the ARN program being approved.
Yes, so, I think, I think you're asking if the halftime person, I think you're asking if the halftime person is in here, is that correct, is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm asking is, is that would be a negotiation type thing, is that where you're going to, is you want to negotiate more money, or you wanna?
Yes, yes. I can tell you that, and I'm giving away negotiation, uh, power here, but whatever happens, we are committed to this halftime person, whatever happens, if you can, you know, we are committed, this is so important, for our partnership. Uh, so if you can help, absolutely, so we'll send it to you, I don't think that's in here, because we made that decision actually yesterday, uh, actually, Eric and I finalized it this morning, for the halftime decision. So it's not official yet, but you are gonna get that, Christie, so whatever, we are committed to this, but I see that it's not in here, uh, so what, we have to send you what that costs, and obviously, if you can help with that, I would, uh, appreciate it. But we, again, we're committed to it, so yes, we'll, we'll make sure that we get that.
And help us find somebody great, because it's gonna be an on-job opportunity in the county.
Yes. So, yes, so, we'll make sure we get that probably today or tomorrow, that, that.
Yes, it is, Denise.
Yes, yes, we'll do that.
Look at it, and see if we need to go on that.
Absolutely, I appreciate that you're bringing that up, because that's a good point.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you.
Well, thank you, guys, very much.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, nice to meet you.
Quite an interview, I think, that's a tough thing there, so, thank you very much.
Should be fortunate not to go to Florida, because it's hot in Houston.
I know.
Deep asleep sand, so, you don't want that.
The way that came out of these, I was in Baltimore, I didn't like the way that came out, but it is what it is, you know?
We're grateful to see this.
Yeah, and I'm grateful, so, yeah, I'm, I'm committed to this area, so.
I know, there's been quite an audience, we're gonna take a five-minute break, as we can, we don't have, we'll come back in about twenty-one minutes after.